Okay, is everyone ready? I'd like to call to order the Merrimack School District SAU 26 School Board Meeting for June 5th, 2023. Will please everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Okay, so before we begin, our Chair Ken Martin and our member Lori Peters are excused from tonight's meeting. We'd like to start with public participation. If you would like to address the school board, please step up to the mic and give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Theresa Yasovich. My address is 1 Audubon Circle in Merrimack. I've heard the board speak before to how much they value and support the arts, music, and drama in our schools. As you look to set your goals for the summer, I ask that you consider drama club as a focus for this board. Performance arts provides a rich opportunity across a variety of skills for our students, and the students of Merrimack deserve the best experience available. Thank you.
Any other speakers this evening? Okay, moving on to recognitions. We're going to start with the Poetry Out Loud Regional Semi-finalists. One second.
So Jacob Puzo, Merrimack High School sophomore, has the distinction of being the first Merrimack High School student to participate in the Poetry Out Loud contest in nearly a decade. Jacob was one of ten semifinalists to participate at the New Hampshire Regional Semi-final Round of Poetry Out Loud held at the New England College in Henneker.
And next tonight, we're going to recognize the first team, and we'd start by letting the students come to the mic. If you could just say your name. I know that a few of you wanted to say a few words. After the students, we'll have the advisors, we'll have the superintendent of schools, and then we'll do the awards. So students first.
No, no, you can sit here. Just make sure you hit the button to turn on green.
Just push, yeah, turn it on, the light will turn green.
Awesome. Okay. Good evening. My name is Samantha Poirier, and this is Lucas Alguire. We are the captains of Chop Shop, the Merrimack High School Robotics Team. We would like to start by thanking you all for your support towards our team. The effort that you put into helping the clubs at MHS does not go unnoticed. Through your support, we were able to travel safely and comfortably to all our competitions, have equipment and space for building our robots, and funding to help our expenses. With this support, we would not have been able to compete successfully this year.
We started off with only ten team members this year, but through effective recruiting, we brought our team member count to thirty. With our successful season last year, we were optimistic about this season, and it turned out to be yet another successful season. Before the competition season even started, we won the Governor's Award at the Governor's Cup Competition in October, which means all of our graduating seniors get one free semester of tuition at any public New Hampshire college. Once we found out what this year's competition was going to be in January, we spent about six weeks designing and building what turned out to be a very competitive, a robust robot on the world stage. With the effective strategy that we developed at our competitions, we were picked by strong alliances. At the first district championships, we were able to qualify for the first world championship, making that the first time the team has qualified in back-to-back years with our robot. At Worlds, we were ranked thirty-fifth out of seventy-five teams on our field.
In addition to the Governor's Award, we won the most prestigious award in first twice this season, the Impact Award, formerly known as the Chairman's Award. This is given to teams who make a difference in their community and not just build competitive robots. We won the Impact Award at the WPI event, which allowed us to compete with ten other teams at the district championship, where we were one of four teams chosen to represent New England from this award at the first championship in Houston, and the only team from New Hampshire to win that honor. We had quite a number of accomplishments this year. Again, we would like to thank you for your support and funding. Without this, we would not have been able to accomplish as much as we did. Thank you. We also have two medals that we would like to give you guys.
These are the medals that we received when we won the first Impact Award at the district level, and as Sammy said before, we were one of the only four teams from New England to represent New England at world championships for impacts that we make in our community and spreading STEM ideals, not just like in our community, but throughout first.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'd like to congratulate you. We have some certificates for you, but I want to also mention that in addition to the Governor's Award, the Governor's Cup, it was a district award, as you mentioned, is the WPI District Event Regional Impact Award at the New England District Championships, first pick of the fourth seed Alliance Captain Rhode Island District Event, first pick of the third seed Alliance Captain WPI District Event, second pick of the fourth seed Alliance Captain at the New England District Championships, the thirty-first place of the Johnson Field of the First Championships, and even the recipient, very importantly, the recipient of the Woody Flowers gracious professionalism pin. The first created the pins in honor of Woody Flowers, who developed the idea of gracious professionalism. Volunteers at First Championships, and FIRST stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, that's what the acronym stands for. Volunteers at First Championships give the pin to someone exhibiting gracious professionalism during the competition. The Merrimack High School first team was not picked for an alliance at First Championships, however, they were just sitting there and watching, and the team started to cheer for all of the other New England teams. That was so impressive that they received the pin for the Woody Flowers graciousness professionalism recognition. So, you know what, just as important as anything else, is good sportsmanship and support of other teams. So we congratulate you on that.
It's now Board Member Hardy's going to read your names. So as you come up to get your certificate, after you get your certificate, if you look at the camera, then you could always be on camera for the rest of your life. So make sure you get a good picture, okay? And after you finish, if you could just sit down for just a couple minutes so the board can also have a few comments.
All right. We are going to start with Angel Feliciano. Ryan Nurk. Christian Page. Nathan Cargile. Nathan McGregor. Sean Mixch. Tim Paquin. Trenton Fornier. Joe Janeki. Ben Haddad. Tim Bevis. Shane Gilbert. Dylan Amy. Tristan Collins. Liam Murphy. Lucas Suzella. Lucas Alguir.
Did he just say that's me?
Yes.
Hazel Ramundo. Daniel Cruz. Sammy Poirier. Faith Burke. Olivia Diaz. Laura Bevel. Maya Ashland. Helen Saunders. Phoebe Fall. And Katie LaGaye. Do you want me to read all the mentors together, and they can all come up at once, or do you want me to do them one at a time? Okay, so the first team mentors' coaches are Ben Borogard, Al Baressa, Connor McBride, Aiden Cox, Lath Juma, Matthew Susi, Julia Messier, Matthew Gage, and Lucas Anderson. Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
I wasn't expecting to say anything, but I will just say that, you know, we only had about half of the kids that were able to make it tonight, but this has been an amazing ride for the last few years between everything that's happened with COVID and everything that has happened since. You know, it's going to be, we always turnover kids every year, and it's going to be sad to see our seniors leave, but we're excited about the future, and we really appreciate the support. And like they said, you know, it's not just what we do in the shop, it's the support of the community at large, the school board, the school system, and it's just a great pleasure to be able to work with these kids. So, thank you.
Now I'm just going to open it up for comments of the board.
Well, I'll start by just saying awesome job, and I'm so proud of all of you. I only know a couple maybe of you personally, but it's so awesome to see Merrimack go out on the national stage and perform so well and make us look so well, and just so proud of all that you do. And my son participated in robotics for a nanosecond, but I do remember, I do know that Matthew Gage is so dedicated. I mean, he was there even when my son was in middle school. I didn't, I don't even think you had a middle school student at the time. I think you were down there helping just because. So I know that the people that help your teams be successful are so dedicated and so hardworking, and obviously part of your success is their investment in you. So we're just thankful for all of you, and what a great job that you all did.
Ditto. I actually wanted to recognize our Poetry Out Loud semifinalist. I used to volunteer at the state level finals for Poetry Out Loud, and it was an amazing experience. And I was super excited to see your name on the list because I love it that we're getting into that, and Merrimack is doing that, and that's an awesome thing. So I'm glad you did it, and I'm glad you did so well, and congratulations.
So again, congratulations to all students here tonight. You know, the first team was founded in 1989 by Dean Kamen, and Dean Kamen was just really an average high school student who was an innovator, who was a creative thinker, who went to high school, and he just wanted to invent. And we are very fortunate that Dean Kamen lives right in the town next to us in Bedford, New Hampshire. And a couple of our students from Merrimack High School started in the late eighties, early nineties, and they've climbed up the ladder. They worked for US First. We're hoping that some of you might be able to, after you finish college, go and work for US First. It's a proven STEM program that's about critical thinking, problem-solving, analysis and evaluation, and all of those are such important skills to have as a high school student, and that's what colleges are looking for. So we're congratulations. As far as the Woody Flowers Award, that celebrates effective communication, Woody Flowers was a professor at Worcester Polytech Institute. That's where he met Dean Kamen, and he understood the importance of communication and the importance of being able to communicate feelings. And so that's a lifetime skill if we're looking at one skill, and for you to be awarded that, and the way you got it was really just very genuine. You went out there, and you were cheering your hearts out, and you were communicating, and someone recognized that specialness and said, you know, this team's a special team, and we need to give them this award. So congratulations. Anyone else? Okay, you guys don't have to stay unless you want to. We love having you here.
May I just say while everyone is here, we have a special award also for a very special member who has served on this board for the last couple of years. And Caitlin, if I can meet you out front here, we have a plaque for you in recognition of your outstanding service representing the students of Merrimack School System on the Merrimack School Board for the last two years.
So comments on Caitlin. Oh, we let all the people leave before we say our comments to Caitlin? Oh, you were always so prompt, you were always so prepared, and you were always such a bright ray of sunshine at 7:00 PM, when sometimes I felt like I was dragging myself here at the end of a long day, which surely you were too. So I was always grateful for your energy and your smile and your commitment, and I wish you only the best going forward. I have no doubt you are going to be extremely successful.
I love how you often spoke up. We'd be all over here in our own little world, talking about something that affected students, and you'd be like, I'm a student, and I have something to say. That was awesome, and I really appreciated it, and you were always insightful and represented the students of Merrimack very well.
So I just think that, you know, there's people in life that just go the extra mile and then go the extra mile, and to have a student who goes the extra mile and goes the extra mile, you know, high school is a dress rehearsal for life. So I just, I'm very excited where it's going to take you, and I hope it takes you right to the school board one day, and you can come back and serve our community again. So congratulations. Thank you for all you've done for us. We are going to miss you, and we wish you best of luck. Come and check in on us sometime and let us know how you're doing. I know you're going to do great.
And may I just say that we have always enjoyed your infectious enthusiasm, your ability to clearly articulate your opinion on something. You were never reluctant to do that, and many of us work long hours, we go home very tired, but we always remember that you represent the reason why we love doing what we do, because we're so very proud of you and what you have accomplished, and the ability that you have demonstrated to represent the entire student body. So couldn't ask to have worked with anyone any better, and we wish you nothing but the greatest of luck and happiness in the future.
Go enjoy the movie.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we're moving on to informational updates, superintendent update.
This past weekend, fifteen of track and field athletes qualified for the Meet of Champions against the top athletes in New Hampshire. Tyler Southstrom came in fourth in the 800 meters, Cam Fredette eighth in the 1600 meters, Zach Rizui, and I hope I pronounced his name, tenth in the shot put. The boys' four-by-800 made up of Ben Bosale, Nathan Borogad, Jordan Sujanto, and Owen Forrest took 10th place. Alex Best was first in the triple jump and second in the 100-yard dash, fifth in the long jump, Melody Bedard, Melanie Bedard, eighth in the 1600 meters, Kaylee Dillon, third in the long jump, third in the 100-meter hurdles, and fifth in the 300-meter hurdles. Lily Farrell was 11th in the triple jump, and Mia Getchell, 10th in the shot put. Girls' four-by-100 made up of Tate Capisi, Lily Farrell, Kara Sullivan, and Haley Roy took 15th place, and with Tyler, Alexis, and Kaylee qualifying for the New England's this Saturday in Bangor, Maine. So congratulations to them. Trevor Knight has sent something along about the Senior Service Day, which took place on Monday, May 22nd. It was their 27th Annual Senior Service Day, formerly known as Seniors Helping Seniors. Each year in May, high school seniors from Merrimack High School are given the opportunity to volunteer to go to various sites in Merrimack to assist senior citizens and disabled residents with jobs such as raking, picking up fallen branches, leaves, twigs, sweeping, gardening, spreading bark mulch, et cetera. With this program, seniors have an opportunity to give back to the community, which has time and time again have given so much over the years to the school district and the students in the school district. This year was another successful program. There were 115 seniors at Merrimack High School who participated in the Senior Service Day this year at almost forty locations throughout the community. And so we congratulate them on a very outstanding program, and we'd also like to thank, a special thank you, to the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 98, who every year was on a cookout for the senior class and Senior Service Day. So thank you to the American Legion. From Kaylee Roper, the middle school, seventh graders, were all going on a field trip at Squaw Lake Science Center. There were seventy-three students that have gone first thing in the morning, and the presentation about food webs made by the organization, and specifically learned about a number of animal species. They saw a number of animals indigenous to New England and New Hampshire in particular, including otters, foxes, and black bears. Want to remind everyone that this is Senior Week, and tonight is movie night on the football field. Wednesday is a trip to Six Flags during the day. Thursday is the Senior Cruise in the Mount Washington. On Friday, one of the most special traditions that Merrimack High School engages in, and that is the annual Hawk Walk, which involves students going back to their elementary schools, which is always a very, very meaningful event. And graduation, as you know, is this upcoming Saturday, starts at 10 o'clock on the football field, and we want to congratulate certainly all of the seniors and wish them the best of luck in the future. That is it.
Comments or questions from the board? Okay, moving on. Assistant Superintendents for Business Update.
What time should the board arrive for graduation?
Well, I would say, excuse me, I would say sometime, probably around 9:15.
So Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Every summer, around mid-August, for two weeks, we have our annual audit of our financials. And if that's not fun enough, we have something called preliminary audits in the month of May, which just happened a couple of weeks ago. We did exceedingly well. We were met with flying colors. I'd like to thank Pearl Bratton, our AP person, and Sarah Raffel payroll for making that happen and keeping all those records pure and precise and documented. Of course, HR has a lot to do with it too, with their documentation of all the contracts so everything lines up. So it's an entire group effort. Just want to let you know, a while back, we had a $120,000 grant from the Safe Schools Department, and we're around 60% done with that project. When we're complete, we'll let you know. It's an enhanced security measure that we're taking to secure all our schools, and we're going to be going a little bit further with that also, and so I'll keep you posted. We're not going to mention the details in public session because it's best to kind of keep those things between us. I just want to let you know, things are moving along nicely. I did have, was in contact with VHB. They're doing our, they're doing some renditions of our master plan. They have a couple of preliminaries. I'm supposed to be getting those this week, so we'll take a look at them, and when they're ready for prime time, after I hide them in a mayonnaise jar under Funk and Wagner's front porch, if anybody can tell me what that reference is for, you get, well, you get a pen, okay? And once we're done with that, you know, we're planning to go in front of the Planning and Building Committee. I'd like to go in front of the Town Center Committee like we did before with Steve Keach, and then we're going to bring it to the board and see what everybody thinks. So there's going to be around three different options of what we can do. We're moving along with the eventual demise of the Red House. The asbestos is going to be taken out of the building, and we've contracted with CSSI, the Helvatsis Brothers, to stub off all the utilities at the street, so there'll be no gas, there'll be no water, anything like that. So when the demo hits, it'll be a clean demo and a clean site. It's going to take place over the summertime. No use starting anything quicker than that, but the asbestos removal is going to happen shortly. So we're moving along slowly. The roof, J-Muse, the guys from Team Craft came up, they were the winning bid. All the bidders are excellent, excellent quality. They just happen to be the winning bidder, and they do an absolute phenomenal job. They came up here last week to do a walkthrough with Tom, and I can't thank Tom enough for getting on the roof with them, because I don't like heights, and it doesn't seem to bother him. And so- And so they did a site visit there and they're from down south and they were hoping to get some cool weather up here. But last week, we were laughing, last week didn't really oblige them. So, you know, they'll be back up pretty soon. So that, that's, that's on the move and that's ready to go when the second school gets out. So we're moving along. That's it. Thank you.
Comments, questions?
May I, may I just add that in talking about school security, Neil Martin, who is a safety auditor from the New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security, over the last two weeks and into next week will be completing the security audits of all of our schools.
So next is the school board update. And the school board would like to congratulate the class of 2023. The truth of the matter is, it took perseverance, focus, and determination, especially after our experiences with remote learning. We'd like to congratulate the graduates, their parents, and their guardians. And just remind everyone that high school graduation is not the end. It's really just the beginning. And so we look forward to Saturday. Also, a quick thank you to all of our teachers and staff, especially the teachers and staff that are retiring at the end of this year. After giving a lifetime to the Merrimack School District, the school board really appreciates your service and we will miss you. Student representative update.
Good evening, everyone. So, so far, of course, like the superintendent has said, graduation for the seniors of 2023 is on Saturday, June 10th. So if you'd like to support our amazing seniors, like our previous student representative, Kayla and Badney, be sure to be there. Though, those that aren't seniors for graduation, finals is coming soon, which is beginning June 13th, while the 12th being a review day. The last day of school is June 20th, with that, with that day being a makeup day. So technically, and school ends the 19th. Overall, not quite so eventful this week or the next due to finals and students wrapping up assignments. That's about it for my update.
Thank you. Old business, under old business, the board is preparing for our June Goals Meeting. And in our next meeting on June 19th, in public session, we will be talking about the superintendent's annual review. New business. A review in career and technical education CTE programs.
Thank you. Several weeks ago, Jenny, you had asked for some information. And please know that during the upcoming school year, we will be providing you with more information on the CTE programs because they are that important to our students. Each region enters into an agreement with the schools that they participate with over a four-year period. The current agreement between Merrimack and Alveron High School and Nashua North and South will come to an end at the end of the upcoming school year and then a new, new agreement will be consummated. There are just some general information. About 28 career technical education centers across New Hampshire, serving various regions and schools within those regions, with over 9,300 students being served. Very importantly, these centers partner with business organizations. Because the statute that pertains to CTE centers, which is RSA 188E, 1- A, requires that we meet with high-demand jobs and high-paying jobs, that we focus career opportunities on those two elements. I have presented to you on the, in my brief memo also, there are 18 clusters, career technical education clusters that are offered across the state. Obviously, not all clusters are offered at every CTE center that services regional high schools. In talking with our existing director of school counseling, Deb Barker, and the incoming director of 9 through 12 school counseling, Kay Coburn, every Merrimack 10th grade student receives application materials to both the programs offered at Alveron and Hudson and Nashua North and South. For the 2223 school year, I will say that there are about, I believe, 50, about 50 students, 59 students, I think there are, in the program. For next year, 81 students from Merrimack applied, 49 were accepted, which is, which is an issue. We'd love to see 81 accepted, but there isn't enough capacity. 29 were waitlisted and three withdrew from, from interest in participating in the program. Some of the complicating factors that the CTE regional concept realizes is that, first of all, there are a limited number of seats available in each CTE site. There is some travel time involved. So you would love to have students be exposed to a number of different clusters, but some of those could involve 20, 30, 40 miles of travel, which is, which is very impractical. And one of the important things is we need to synchronize our school calendars, which we began about a year, two year and a half ago. We had several meetings because that's part of the statute, that there can be no more than 10 days that deviate in the schedule. So that students, when they are in school here, they can be in school in the CTE centers. That we don't want to have a one or two-week vacation period while the CTE centers are still in, in session. So I've presented to you a listing of the students, 53 students this year, excuse me. There are 53 students involved. You can see the clusters that they're involved with in the handout with my memo. And on the back, there's a listing of the 28 centers that are in the, in the state that service regional school, high schools in their area. I look forward to being more involved with this and our guidance counseling department being more involved in the upcoming years also. You know, when I was in a school district in Massachusetts, I looked at a report by the Massachusetts Business Alliance for Education, which was composed of a lot of executives from the high-tech sector. They did a survey some years ago in terms of employee and employer needs. And 65% of the respondents said that now and in the future, they are absolutely desperately in need of more vocationally trained workers. And so my only regret in, in this profession is that in many states, and I understand it's, it's a matter of economics, that the local high schools, for the most part, no longer have vocational shops. Now, we do have a couple here, but they became centralized and specialized. And one of the problems that I think this profession faces is there isn't enough capacity. And sometimes the admission of students is, is quite difficult. And students who need the programs the most and can benefit the most are not admitted for one reason or another. Now, I'm not referring to any particular site, but that's just the experience I've had over about the last 15 to 20 years, is that we need to expand those programs. I'd love to see them come back to local high schools. Yes, I would. But I know that that's a matter of economics and is probably not, not going to take place. So I've had some good preliminary conversations with the incoming director of counseling at the high school. And we're looking forward to presenting with more information throughout the upcoming school year.
Questions and comments?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you. I've been asking for a while to hear some more information. And this is really exciting, preliminary information about all of this. I sort of dipped my toe in on my own. I had the opportunity to go and visit the Alveron CTE Center. So I was able to go over there on my own and, and tour and see the programs firsthand. I was so impressed, so, so impressed. I also took it upon myself to go visit some of them in Nashua, also incredibly impressive. In fact, that visit prompted me to tell one of my children that I thought that would be a really good idea. And I'm pleased to say I will be able to have my firsthand experience in this next year because that student was accepted and I think is going to do it. So I think that's really exciting for me as a board member to be able to have firsthand experience. I will say though, in the beginning of that, I had a lot of questions and answers were in short supply. So I love that you're going to be working with the new director of guidance to really make sure that our guidance department is able to answer parent and student questions really well. And I would encourage, I don't even know if this happens, but I would encourage our guidance counselors to go take tours. Because in talking to some of them, I wasn't entirely sure they really had seen some of these. So as a board member, that would be a suggestion that I would have over the summer. I don't know if they have a workshop day or whatever. I know they're very busy. But for them to know, even, even getting the appropriate contact information was a little challenging. So to increase the level of what is, what their knowledge about that and their ability then encourage students to try these things and say, I've seen it, it's awesome. Look, you should see the cool things they're doing, which I was then able to do. After seeing in Alveron, a student had mentioned to me, oh, I think I'd be interested in this. And I said, oh my goodness, you should look at this program. And they were like, that's a thing? And I was like, yes, and you should, and they did this and this. And they were like, I didn't even know that existed. And it was good for me to see it with my own eyes. And it, so that really helped. So thank you for this presentation. Anything we can do to raise awareness for our students beyond what we're already doing, I think would be helpful because out of my three high school students, only one picked up on it on their own. And that was because I was saying, look for it, look for it, look for it. And the other two missed it completely. So, and granted, COVID was in the mix during some of that too. So it, it, we've had some weird years. But I'd love to see it much more high-profile, the more of our students. And I think having a director of pathways to graduation will help too, because I think part of his role can be to elevate this for, for the students that that's a really good fit for. I'm just really excited about these partnerships and thankful that we have these opportunities for our kids.
I think we're going to have an exciting year next year. And we will raise the level of awareness because this is so important and it's such an integral part of a large number of students at the high school. And, and I agree, the pathways program will, will help bring this to an elevated level also.
Are there, are we going to have any ability when we next negotiate to have more students attend or do they pretty much dictate that? Because I saw we've got, we had 81 apply and they only gave us 50 spots.
That's one of the things that is really a very important component of any negotiations and any agreement to talk about. It's, it's been a historical problem that there aren't enough seats, but we'll try our best to get more, more seats available because it's extraordinarily important.
So I agree with everything everyone said. I think that the CTE experience is so important. It would be great for our students to have more information and to be able to understand the time commitment because students that are going to travel to Nashua or Hudson, it does cut into their ability to get credit. So that's where the pathway to graduation, like Jenna was saying, you know, we're going to have to think of creative ways because they're on a bus. And if they get stuck on that bus and they don't get back in time, they leave, that travel time is, is, is a real issue. It is a roadblock. The other thing that I think was a real roadblock too is that CTE directors, I know in Nashua, they, this is like their fourth one in six years. So when you start having high turnover rates, then a lot gets lost. So hopefully, you know, through hiring practices and getting people that will stay and build these programs, because these programs are phenomenal. I mean, students graduate and they have these skills that when they go into cosmetology, they automatically get a $1,000 scholarship and they have, you know, one year cut out of their whole, whole program. I mean, it's, it's amazing. So I, I do think it's, it's critical, but I do understand that there's downfalls. And then for us, we're, when the directors of guidance of Nashua North and South and the directors of guidance at Alveron, they're picking their kids first. So we're kind of always going to be, you know, taking the backseat, like Merrimack gets five, Merrimack gets three, instead of having 30 seats. That makes it difficult.
Can I ask a question of clarification just, just on this? And you may not know the answer. This may be for whoever actually typed this up. Because it says, it says, for example, accounting one, just to pick one randomly off the top, you know, terms, Alveron teacher, how many students, and I assume that's how many students are in it, one, yes. And then max seats are eight.
That's for all of the other districts that feed into it also.
Oh, that's, how, how many max seats for any partner district, not home district? Okay, that's interesting.
That's why it's so fun.
Okay.
But some good congratulations for your child.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're very excited because now we have our very exceptional Human Resources Department Director.
For those of you who do not know me, I am Melissa Fazlick. I'm the Director of Human Resources for the district. And thank you for having me here this evening. I wanted to provide sort of a year in review of where we've been, where we are, where we're going, and some trends with HR in the district. As Matt alluded to earlier, there's a lot of partnerships between finance and HR. And I certainly do not do this alone. The rest of the team couldn't be here this evening, but they are much appreciated and do a lot of this work with me. So Kat Knower, she's an administrative assistant, supports HR and payroll. Heather Wells supports finance and HR. Paula Williams, HR coordinator, and myself, Director of Human Resources. So what we do in human resources? Well, whatever the day throws at us, usually we have our to-do list, that's about a page and a half long, and we'll be lucky if we check off a few. So it's all about prioritizing our day. Recruiting and onboarding is a big part of our role. We have quite a few open positions right now and we are recruiting hard to get those filled and onboarding those employees so they're ready to start. Employee benefits is also a big part of our leave, not only health and dental benefits, but leave benefits that employees are entitled to. A lot of compliance goes into human resources, making sure we are doing our reports that we need to and just complying in our ways of onboarding and offboarding employees. Workers' compensation and unemployment is a big part of our role as well. And of course, we have retention efforts, offboarding, and retirement. And with recruiting efforts, of course, I have to throw in a plug for why would you want to work for the Merrimack School District? And not only is it a great commuting location, being in between Nashua, Manchester, and not far from the Massachusetts border, excellent benefits. Our insurance offerings are exceptional. We offer a multitude of benefits. One of our benefits even includes a pension, which is hard to find these days. But for educators in New Hampshire, we do offer that pension program through New Hampshire Retirement System. We have robust professional development opportunities for all of our staff, not just educators, for our support staff as well. We have professional development. There's $2,000 per support staff employee that's written into the contract that does get utilized. So I really am happy to say that. We also have a mentor program for educators and we have started, this will be our third annual mentor program for support staff as well. So I'll talk about that a little bit more when I talk about our initiatives. Staff of the Merrimack School District, this was exciting to pull. I should have put this after the turnover trend slide now that I think about it. But our average years of service is 12, which is really great. And over 150 of our employees have 20 or more years of service. And as Lori Rothhouse mentioned earlier about staff that have given their life to the district, I was talking with one of our principals today and how many years of service some of the employees retiring had. And 40 years of service, that's amazing. For a few of our retirees have hit that mark. That's really great. 270 of our teachers, out of 300, about 350, have a master's degree or higher, with seven of them having a PhD, which is really impressive. Turnover trends, the one I should have put before that stuff. So as you can see, over time, this one shows by the numbers and the next one shows by the percentage. So we've really hovered around 10%. 21, 22 year was sort of an anomaly. We were up at 15%. I would say that's consistent with surrounding districts when in I would say that's consistent with surrounding districts when in talking to HR directors around the state. COVID did a lot for educators. It was really, really tough, not just for students, for educators, for parents, all around for the community. And I think we really saw that with the turnover. Some people questioning, is education where I want to be? I'm not sure. And I have heard from some of those educators that want to dip their toes back into subbing. And we're happy to have them. It's just they, they needed a break. And that's okay. So right now, hopefully it won't go too much higher. We're right around nine percent, which gets us in line with where we've been in years past. So it's great to keep that under ten percent. And when we look at that by position, teachers, educators do make up that majority, but they are the majority of our staff as well. So in about a district of about seven hundred full-time employees, teachers make up about three hundred and fifty. And then we have other positions that of course make up the rest. So just over half were teachers. Paraeducators came in second there with almost twenty-five percent. So last year, we started an anonymous exit survey. We do one-on-one exit interviews, but sometimes people are more willing to share. If it's anonymous and you wait until, until they're leaving, you know, the last week of school or they have left. So we started that anonymous exit survey and I don't have all of the responses from this year just yet because school is not over. But I have started those exit meetings with our educators. So top reasons, retirement, moving closer to home, leaving education. Unfortunately, I haven't seen that as much this year, which is nice. Leaving for more money, that has also not happened as much this year due to our teacher contract passing and the memorandum of understanding that we were able to negotiate with the support staff union. And others just looking for a change, wondering if, you know, education is for them, if teaching, if the grade span that they're teaching is right for them. So there's definitely a multitude of reasons why. And this is not just educators. This is all employees that are taken into account here. A few of our exciting initiatives, as I mentioned, support staff mentor and onboarding program. We have a torchbearer program, which is a mentor program for our educators. And even if you are a seasoned veteran teacher from another district, you still are given a mentor for your first year in the Merrimack School District, which is really nice. That has been almost twenty years now in place, but we did not have a program for our support staff, our paraeducators. So this, like I said earlier, will be our third annual. We have our first meeting for this summer planning. This week again, so that'll be our third annual onboarding program for our support staff, which is really exciting. We've done a lot of streamlining processes, HR forums, contracts, onboarding. We've also updated a lot of our job descriptions, which goes back to the goals meeting that we had last summer. So I look forward to seeing where the goals meeting takes us for the next year. But we are closing in on getting those job descriptions updated. So that's really exciting. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Comments, questions?
Well, I'll just say, I appreciate you and all you do so much. You are always, first of all, I, I'm you all don't know this, but I love to send her random questions, like off-the-wall thoughts I have. And she's always so quick to get back to me and so professional. And she always gives me exactly the information that I'm looking for. And then always provides something that I didn't think about or what, you know, a new perspective maybe, or just a thought I had. I was like, oh, I hadn't thought about that. So I just appreciate you and all you do so much. And I know that having been through the negotiating process with you before, that you work so hard and are so good advocating for what's best for our employees. And so I just thank you so much for all that you do. You're really good at your job.
Thank you, Jenna. I appreciate that.
So when I flipped through the slides earlier to prepare for the meeting, I had three questions that I wrote down and you answered all of them in your presentation. So awesome. Thank you. That was some, I wanted to say that because just to echo Jenna, I appreciate the work you do for the district. And the fact that you want to constantly improving and making it a better place to be and work is, is a fabulous goal. And we're happy to have you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Naomi.
May I just echo everything you said because we are so fortunate to have Melissa in this school district. Because she is absolutely exceptional. And for members of the community, you have a person here who is about as skilled as any HR person I have ever worked with. And as you said, prompt, very professional and a absolute delight to work with every day.
So I'm hoping that when we do, why work for the Merrimack School District? That we're going to be able to put salary in there. And we are getting there. We're getting there. And we've moved it so we're now towards the top of the middle. But it would be nice if we can just keep that momentum. And, and when you look at the data, because we are data-driven and we are evidence-based. And when I saw some of the data, I, I was like, oh, my goodness, this is not good. But when you look like we stabilized it and, you know, we've received information from Bill that the talent pool that's coming to Merrimack is very good. It's, it's making everyone excited. So, so I'm all excited about all of those great things. And like everyone said, we, you know, you, your, your stability, your enthusiasm and everything that you do to get the job done. It, it's a phone call. We have, we have the information almost immediately, you know, and so we're very grateful. So thank you. Thank you for being in Merrimack. Thank you for being a part of our team.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you.
I could just say one thing. Are you scared right now?
Oh, no, here we go.
No, I think greatest thing about, is, is there a sense of humor and her presence in the office, keeping everything on an uneven keel? Her professionalism, her knowledge, and all the hard work that she had done in negotiations to make it a smooth process, to make everything coherent, so everybody could understand what was going on. You know, Lori, you, you, you've seen the, the Rev One, the Rev Two, the Rev Twelve. I don't even know where the heck I am anymore. And to, to organize it all, to make it not easy for us to understand and go through. That's a Promethean task in and of itself right there. So the organizational skills are just absolutely outstanding. So I'd be remiss if I did not say that. Thank you.
I have one more thing I want to say. I don't mean to embarrass you, but I hope I don't. I went to my daughter's chorus concert last week, last week, the week before. I look over and there she's standing. And I'm thinking, I don't think she lives in Merrimack. So I'm thinking she's there to see her child. No, she was there to see our kids sing. Now, she's not an administrator and she's not, she's, she's, she, right, she's not like a building administrator, right? Like, I dare say there's not a lot of directors of HR going to elementary school chorus concerts. And I found that really meaningful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Time to take her picture and give her a plaque.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next is the request by the administration to hire at will.
Yes, this is in the event that we want to hire a person for a budgeted position. As you know, we meet less frequently during the summer. We will ultimately bring that name to you in the, in the consent agenda. However, if, if there were to be an administrative position, you would still have the opportunity to meet with the person. I don't anticipate any administrative positions being filled during the summer. But this would allow us to move ahead, hiring for a position that is already in the budget without delaying until you have the consent agenda in front of you.
So do we need to make a motion?
That would be, yes, please.
I make a motion that we approve the administration request to hire at will.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, other.
We have policies. Oops, excuse me, no.
Other new business? I don't have any other new business. Okay, now we're going to move on to policies. This is approval of the home education instructional policy. I will accept a motion on the policy to move it forward.
I'll move that we approve the home education instruction policy.
Okay.
I will second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Just, okay, go ahead. I'm not going to say anything. I was just curious if we'd heard anything else from the public since the last meeting or if this is.
No, we have not.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're at, all those in favor?
Aye. Three, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're at the first review of the fund balances.
And all of these policies, I will say once again, have been reviewed by our legal counsel. This policy probably has the least amount of any changes or any policies we've had. There is no red ink on this one. Matt, I don't know if you want to make any comment on this one or not, but.
Oh, and the fund balance policy, the only thing that I added is the, any, any fund balance, unreserved, unassigned fund balance, what was, what it's called. It goes back to reduce the, the school district portion of the tax rate. Initial language was the town, we give it back to the town to reduce their tax rate. It's not the case. That's not how the mechanics work. And just to give you an indication, it's a five percent, used to be two and a half. Now it's five percent of the net assessed assessment. Our assessment this past year was fifty-eight million dollars. So you could take five percent of that. It's around two point nine million dollars. So that's the amount you could retain, but you have to vote on that. And then if you spend it, you have to have a public hearing and you have to lay out what you're going to spend it on. Or at the end of the year, it goes back to reduce taxes. It's, it's something that I've been waiting for, for twenty-three years to be able to have the same ability to retain surplus for both emergency purposes and for tax rate stabilization that I did when I worked for a town. So this is a, I don't know why I should get excited about it, but I am. It's a big deal for me. So I appreciate you looking at it and reviewing it.
Matt, can I just ask a question? So to clarify, you said the thing that you changed or the thing that you added? Is it, you talked about this last paragraph, it says any year-end unassigned fund balance, so only be used or returned to the town to reduce. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it should say, the one I had.
Yeah, any.
It said the school portion of the tax rate.
Oh, yeah, okay. I didn't read far enough. Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So this was just the first read. Any other comments?
I have one minor, it's, it's not even about the, the meaning of the policy. It's sort of an edit, edit question, I guess. It says, notice of the time, place, and subject of such hearing shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the relevant municipality at least seven days before the meeting is held. Should, should we just say general circulation in Merrimack? Or is there some legal reason it says relevant municipality?
In, in general, it's, it's any document that's public, public, published, excuse me, in the, in the region, geographic region.
So, yeah, it all depends. Is, is there, do they still have the Merrimack Journal?
My question on that was like, what newspaper is anyone reading?
Well, no, it's, well, we post it online. We, we, we post it with, it, it, it goes along with any, any monies. We accept over five thousand dollars, has to have a public hearing, posted in a general newspaper circulation. We usually hit the telegraph. Sometimes we hit the union leader that takes care of this area.
Okay.
Yeah, that was just my, that my editor brain looked at that and went, that's more words than I think it needs to be. But if it makes sense the way it is to everybody, then I wouldn't mess with it.
Should it say on the website too or something?
Put it, we put it on Facebook. We do everything, so.
Since, since this is the first reading, what we have generally done is waive, made a motion to waive the first reading.
Maybe just add that. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we waive the first reading of school board policy, DIA fund balances. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And next is the first review of the wellness policy. You know, we've been certainly discussed this, so take any questions, but you also want to waive the first reading of, of this also.
Comments?
Yes, but I'm remembering what they were. On page three, paragraph C, celebrations and rewards, because this is all new. I was wondering if that changes anything that schools are currently doing with respect to celebrations and rewards.
I, I think most schools began to move away from snacks and treats of high calorie content, high fat content, probably about seven or eight years ago. And I know it's, it's, it's difficult sometimes for people to accept that. But we encourage lists, and, and most of the principals, all of the principals in fact, send out lists of suggested snacks that are healthier than others for, for children to bring in. It was, I, I can tell you from personal experience, it was a difficult transition back at, I, I want to say ten or twelve years ago. In a former district in which I worked, because the Bureau of School Nutrition in Massachusetts was quite, quite aggressive in wanting to change the nature of snacks. And it was, it was a little bit difficult for people to accept because the reality of the, of the situation is there's a sociological component to this also in that, you know, a child may be relatively quiet, could be new, relatively few friends. But bringing in cupcakes, bringing in cookies is that connecting mechanism that's, that's very important to them. So, you know, it was a little bit of an adjustment period to, to reduce the fat and bring in some healthier snacks. Healthier in quotations, because there isn't, you know, I don't think there's one snack that's completely healthy. But most, most of the principals have done an excellent job, all of the principals have done an excellent job in informing the parents in terms of what's, what's a reasonably healthy snack? And celebratory item to bring in.
So I guess that's, so you, I guess that's for like, like a kid whose birthday is wanting to bring something in that you're talking about, right?
That. Anything else around a holiday or a special cultural or religious observance, you know, whether it's Christmas or Hanukkah Easter or Passover or any other, and, and I'm only mentioning a few of the many cultural or religious events.
Yeah, I was curious because I was the, I was the room mom for my daughter's class at the elementary school this year. So I was managing some snacks and things that, that parents were sending in and I mean, we did our best, but there's, there's an element of, you know, it's our, it's our Valentine's party. We'd like to, you know, have cookies. And I was a little worried that we were going to say, oh, you can't have cookies at your Valentine's Day party anymore. So that was kind of where I was coming from with that. And I understand where you're coming from with the, because I'm here having this, oh, my gosh, this is a transition feeling, so.
And I think that's why it's really good that we have the wellness committee also, because they can help support the principals and the schools and the, the moms on, you know, what healthy snacks are. And, you know, like, yeah, you can have cookies, but let's make them with applesauce. You know, like, there's ways that we can create healthy.
Or even just the shift I've seen since my bigger kids were in elementary school and it was, let's have a Valentine's party, send in whatever you want, free for all. To what now with my daughter who's still in it. Well, what they're doing is they're doing a signup genius where you can do two sweet treats. And then it's, you know, a couple healthier snacks and then fruits and vegetables. And you sign up and they, they've balanced it out with signup genius as opposed to, hey, send in whatever junk food you want and we'll, it'll, we're going to send your kids home, sugar it up and probably puke on the bus. You know, like, and we've come, we've already made improvements in this direction, I think.
Thank you for saying that because that actually helped. Because I was sitting here thinking, we had, we had parents sending in like popcorn and we had them sending in fruit. And we, but we also, you know, had some cookies. And so that, that actually made me feel better. So thank you, Jenna.
Yeah, I think this is actually capturing more what we actually do now than it is making some sort of new policy.
Yeah, because like, like Bill was saying, back in the day before we had this, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, birthday time at central office where Bill brings in the donuts, right? Instead of grapes or anything like that. But that's central office. It's a little bit different. But, you know, you can't be too draconian at all with this. But you have to allow a little bit of flexibility to get those little treats in there that, that kids love still as, as much as fruit and grapes and everything like that, so.
I was actually impressed as the room mom handing out the snacks, how many kids were like, oh, no, I want watermelon. I was actually impressed as the room mom handing out the snacks, how many kids were like, oh no, I want watermelon, so.
Well, it's a new generation we're raising, right? You know, not all, all kids go for those sweets anymore.
Great. Okay, moving forward, approval of the minute.
Do we have a motion to waive the first reading on that?
Do, do you want to?
I can move that we waive the first reading of the.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? 3-0-0.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on approval of the minutes. The minutes have been distributed. Does anyone have any corrections on the minutes? So um, we can move the minutes as written? Is that okay?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept the May 15th, 2023 minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor? 3-0-0. Okay, Consent Agenda.
Uh, we have um, two resignations, two teacher resignations. Mark Tyers, who was a special education teacher at the upper elementary and Tabby LaPolly, a language arts teacher at the middle school. We have nominations of the following uh, individuals, uh, most of whom are replacements. There is only one uh, new position that was created in the budget. We have Hannah Kirstedt, a special education teacher at uh, best called Elementary School. Rebecca Leary, language arts teacher at the middle school. Rafael Rodriguez, a science teacher at the middle school. Adrian Vale Naylor, who is a school nurse at the upper elementary school. Jennifer Pettit, who is an elementary teacher at Reed's Ferry. Casey Moore, uh, elementary teacher at Reed's Ferry. And Amanda Tobin, uh, English teacher at Merrimack High School. Um, most of these candidates have been coming to us with grade point averages of around 3.5, 3.6, 3.7, 3.9, um, which is very important because that says to me they had high expectations of themselves. And that translates into high expectations for students in the classroom, which is extraordinarily important. So they're very, very well qualified. Uh, very pleased with the applicants that we've been receiving.
Some entertaining emotion to accept the consent agenda.
I move that we accept tonight's consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor? 3-0-0. Okay, moving right along. We're right, like, I think we're pretty much a little bit ahead of ourselves, which is great. So now we're going to do committee reports.
I went to a Parks and Rec Committee meeting um, two, three weeks ago and I completely forgot to bring my notes. So I don't have anything to report.
Anything else? Okay, correspondence.
I uh, had a, a correspondence with a constituent who asked for some more information about the Coach's Handbook and um, I passed that along to them.
I also had a correspondent on a parent uh, in athletics and I sent them back through to Steve Clare. Okay, comments?
Um, I just want to make a comment based on the public participation earlier about the drama club. Um, couldn't agree more. Uh, that is definitely, I, I don't remember that woman's name, but if she continues to somehow watch, um, I just want to say that that's definitely on my radar as well. You know, at Merrimack High School, it's something I'm definitely talking to the administration about. We, we want to be able, and I think we've even talked about it very openly here at this table, how we want to be able to expand our arts programs to include a robust theater program. And um, I'd re, I personally want to be able to work with a high school over the next year to try to make some steps in that direction, so.
As you say, um, you'll see that in one of our goals, in our upcoming goals meeting. Uh, one of the staff members we, we have recently hired from the high school has extensive experience in theater arts. Uh, it's, it's uh, my goal to, to build that program up. Uh, hoping in the, the next summer that we have something we used to have in a former district that I worked in, and that is a summer camp for the performing arts. Where we have a uh, several adults in charge, uh, but a, a group of high school students who are heavily into theater arts, working and providing workshops. This would be a, a camp for students from youngest age right up through high school. Um, I've seen it work and work exceptionally well and would like to bring that to Merrimack.
Yeah, that's. And I think it's just wonderful that we have um, parents that come to the board meetings and they have the courage to come and present their uh, concerns or um, things that they are appreciative of. Um, one of the things that um, Ken and I talked about, you know, six months ago was, you know, we have fidelity in, in the town of Merrimack and uh, it would be great if we could, you know, work together to write a grant from Fidelity to create a fine art center. It's, it's a dream. It's, it's thinking big. It's innovative. But we just had the first team here tonight and they inspired all of us to go out there and let, let, let's try. Like, you know, the worst that can happen is someone could say no, but they might say yes. And we have just so much talent in this town. You see these kids performing at the Palace Theater. They're, they're um, they're amazing. So let's bring some of that right back to Merrimack. Okay, public comments on the agenda items. Any person who'd like to speak? Okay, um, motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. I will second that.
All those in favor? 3-0-0. Have a nice night. We'll see everyone on Saturday.